Okay. Good evening, it's 5:30, October 8th, 2024. I'm calling our Board of Directors meeting to order. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in hand.
Thank you. Next is our land acknowledgement. Havaiania?
Evergreen Public Schools resides on the traditional lands of the Chinookan people and Cowalts tribe. They have lived on and cared for this land and its waterways since time immemorial. We thank them for their stewardship and make this acknowledgement to open a space of recognition, inclusion, and respect for all Indigenous students, families, and staff in our community.
Thank you. The next item is to adopt tonight's agenda.
I move that we adopt tonight's agenda as presented.
Seconded.
And moved by, and seconded, Directors Boconegra and Weatherspoon. Got it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. That's our agenda. The next item on the agenda is public comments. And we have one person signed up for public comments tonight. So there's a maximum of three minutes and come on up. Margaret Hunter. Yeah.
Hello, good evening, Board. It's Superintendent, my name's Margaret Hunter. I teach at Covington Middle School and I'm a member of the community. I'm here to make a comment tonight to read a comment for another teacher in the district who wishes to remain anonymous. Hello Superintendent and Board members. I'm a teacher in this district and I was a student in this district before that. I've been here long enough to have walked on two strikes. For the past few years, I've been affected by the budget cuts and have had my classes get bigger with wider diversities and needs. I know most people in this room and on this board have benefited from paraeducators and classified staff in the classrooms and schools across the districts. They are a vital part of our education system and help fill the gaps of our recent budget cuts that have left, been left behind. No one should have to beg to see the importance of classified staff and paraeducators in our schools. Our students learn better with your paras, our schools are better run and safer with classified staff, and the workload for all certificated staff is more balanced thanks to the incredibly hard work of our paraeducators and classified staff. With this importance in mind, I implore you to make their bargain decent and non-contentious. They deserve the dignity of a respectful bargain. We all deserve a bargain that is not full of lies, manipulation, and scheming to save a few bucks at the expense of students. Please bring dignity back to the Board and the district bargain team and bargain in good faith in a speedy resolution with our classified this year. Furthermore, I know many financial constraints have put our districts in a state and position. The district failed to do its due diligence during the last levy to fully inform the public of the need for those levy dollars. The teachers and staff of the district rallied and got the seventh, second levy passed. We've also been the ones to endure the cuts and layoffs, class size increases, and safety issues. We've been the ones sacrificing over and over and over again. So all I ask, beg and implore is that you give it your all to promote the upcoming levy. I know more than you on the Board how vital this levy is for the functionality of our school. Please don't anti-education, please don't help anti-education advocates in destroying public schools through underfunding. Please help inform our community on how important it is to pass this levy. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. That concludes the public comments section. The next item on the agenda is our Board Consent Agenda. Is there a motion?
I move that we adopt the Board Consent Agenda as presented.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded Director Weatherspoon and Boconegra. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Consent Agenda. Is there a motion?
I motion to accept the Superintendent's Agenda.
Okay.
Seconded. Oh, sorry. Seconded.
It's been moved by Director Wilson and seconded by Director Boconegra to adopt the Superintendent Consent Agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The next item is our Superintendent Report. Dr. Maloney?
Thank you very much. I've been a little busy and there's been great things happening across the district and I'm going to share a little bit about some of the visits and the things that are happening and then also some of the events that I've been involved in to give you a little taste of what's happened the last couple of weeks. So I was given the opportunity to present to the Columbia River Economic Development Council. So there was about 30 people in the room that represented businesses and the ports and different people who have a really great connection across Vancouver. And so I was able to not only present about Evergreen Public Schools but then also school funding and how that plays out for not only our district but other districts across the state and how important our levy is for the, for the functioning of our school district and the great things we're able to provide for our staff and kids through the levy process. So great conversations, great connections there. Was also, we're continuing our equity work with our Superintendent Leadership Team and so we are now starting on Thursday, our second chapter of Whistling Vivaldi by Claude Steele. And it's all about how stereotypes affect us and what we can do. It's a great book and we've had already around the first chapter, some really intense and fruitful conversations around the topic. I was able to attend a couple of foundation meetings and I'm very, very, very thankful and I made sure I expressed my thanks to this, the Evergreen School District Foundation for the support of our staff. They provided lots of scholarships for teachers, I mean scholarships for students, excuse me, and then they provided all sorts of grants for our teachers. And so we've helped promote and send that information out to our staff so that they can apply for those grants that the foundation provides them. So I want to say it's upwards of forty some thousand dollars for teachers and then it's quite a bit for scholarships as well. So I'm very impressive and very thankful for their partnership. Able to present at an Operation Leaders Meeting and on leadership in action as well as with our administrative interns just last night. And we, that's where we talked a little bit about what leadership is and what leadership is not and revisited the five things that I've been talking about with staff and communities and, and our families is assuming positive intent, being kinder than necessary, systems that serve, measuring twice, cutting once, and being culturally responsive leaders. And so we shared specific examples of how we saw those playing out and examples of those within our departments that they led or that they saw within the school system, something that they were part of or something that they saw. And so it was very inspiring to hear those stories that were shared out and about in those, in those meetings. Had a meeting with ESE 112. We have our workers' compensation and unemployment through them and so learned more about that and how they support us with, with those pieces there that we must have in order to function as a school district. I've been asked to mentor at the state level, a brand new superintendent, so I'm doing that. And then we also are growing our own here in Evergreen. So there are two aspiring superintendents that I have been asked to mentor as well. So meetings with both of them and the other one who is in southwest Washington here as well. Making lots of connections with staff and administrators. So I had my principals meeting with the superintendent. It's completely optional and we held, held it over at Y East in the library, what a beautiful building that is. And so quite a few people showed up and we were able to talk about things that were working well and things that were not working so well and anything else they wanted to share. So I've got some high-level summaries for that that I'll share eventually with the Board and already shared that with our Superintendent's Leadership Team. I also met with, I did chat with Christine, the first of the series that I'm going to be doing throughout this entire school year. So we had around, I want to say 25 to 30 staff members that represented classified teachers, academic interventionists, secretaries, and we, it was hosted at Emerald Elementary and so I was there and we just had a great conversation. They shared things that were top of mind for them and I was able to answer questions for them as well and we just had a great open dialogue and conversation. So I'll be sharing high-level information regarding what I've learned with our Superintendent's Leadership Team on Thursday and then again providing a high level for the Board as we go through my entry plan coming up. So I do want to say huge thank you, shout out to the staff and the administrators, the principals that showed up at these meetings. They took time, they're completely optional again and they took time away from their family or, you know, going out for dinner or whatever else they had planned to do that and spend the time with me. So it's a huge thank you from me. Latino Youth Leadership Conference that happened on Friday. I was personally invited by the founder and director, Diana Avalos Leos, of the Latino Leadership Northwest Organization. And around 650 students attended. It's the largest it has ever been in southwest Washington and it's been happening, I believe, for about 13 years. And we had, I couldn't believe this, we had almost 250 students from Evergreen Public Schools represented there. So by far, we, we were rocking it there. And I absolutely, absolutely loved their mascot. They had actually a giant Sasquatch, Bigfoot, running around as well to help excited with. But the presenters there were people from all different business areas and nonprofits and fish and wildlife and really had a great connection and great stories to share with the Latino population, our student population that, that came. And so really great connections there and great storytelling to help inspire students. So I had the privilege of being there too. And our Director of Equity, also Jamila Singleton, was able to attend as well. And I did see Chief Academic Officer Brian Fox there and I'm trying to remember, there's quite a few district staff that were able to come out. Some spent just a little bit of time but they were a presence there in support and I was able to clear the calendar and spend the day, day there with, with, with our students. I also was invited to go and visit our Teen Parent Program at Evergreen High School. And this is a program that is called GRAD and actually I don't remember exactly what the G R A D stands for, but it's called the GRAD program and it's through a grant. And we provide support for young parents. And so I was there to meet with some amazing resilient young women who are mothers, are going to be mothers soon and talk with them about the things that they are expecting and looking forward to. And each one of them is determined to finish high school. They want their high school diploma and some of them even talked about other types of things they want to do beyond the high school diploma. And so it was amazing, inspiring to see that we help support our students and help them figure out what it is they want to do with their life and their goals. So I was very honored to be invited to that. School visits, so Director Perkins, you were able to come with me to Columbia Valley, had a great time touring there and visiting classrooms and I would like to, and also this week I went to Furcrest and I do want to do a call out to Scott Upinger, he's the principal over there. And he was kinder than necessary. So at recess, there was a little kinder student who was up underneath the jungle gym and did not want recess to end, even though it had ended for him. And so Scott got up underneath the jungle gym and he's kind of a big tall guy. So he pretzled himself up and got underneath there and talked with the little boy and, you know, it was just kinder than necessary, right? To be able to help that little boy eventually find his way back to class. So I wanted to do a call out on that. I also had the opportunity to visit with a teacher at Union High School, so went out there early before class started regarding safety and security, great conversations there. And speaking of safety and security, Vancouver School District Superintendent myself along with our safety and security team, we've been meeting regionally with other districts of Vancouver PD and with Clark County. I mentioned that last time. And we're really starting to hone in on a, on a discussion regarding, regarding a community school liaison officer. And so that is something that we're looking at for support. So we have direct connection and a single point of contact. We think that would be very, very helpful for us to have that. So discussions are beginning with that. So, and there's a lot of pre-work that has been happening. Okay, I think that's my big giant list.
Wonderful. Thank you, Dr. Maloney. Are there any questions? Okay. Thank you again. The next item on the agenda is a presentation by Chief Academic Officer Dr. Brian Fox. Dr. Maloney?
Good evening, President Perkins, members of the Board. This evening I have four topics to share with you as part of the Teaching and Learning and Equity Update. And to begin with, I'd like to share again the next slide, Lori, which promotes our perspective that all that we do in teaching, learning, and equity is in support of our 38 schools, students, and teaching staff. And my hope is that through these updates, you'll get a better idea of the departments that make up teaching, learning, and equity and the work that we do to support students in schools. So this evening I would like to feature our multilingual learning department where Director Veronica Magallanes and her team work hard to support individual students in the schools they attend. Words are important and we used to identify students as E L L, English Language Learners. And instead now we use the term multilingual learners. Multilingual learners are students growing and learning in multiple languages. The term multilingual learner is an assets-based term with which we recognize the whole student and emphasize what a student knows rather than what they don't know. To promote a culture of safety and belonging, we support multilingual learners in their homeschool. We have inclusive schools and want each student to feel culturally accepted, welcomed, and an encouraged part of their school community. Our aim is to help each classroom teacher provide meaningful access to grade-level content where whole-class instruction in English addresses the most critical academic language functions and features of the lesson. And then in support of each student, we're working to ensure that multilingual learners receive targeted, small-group instruction that is specific to the learner's language proficiency. Within the multilingual, multilingual learning department are language services for students acquiring English as well as Spanish and dual-language programs. So a dual-language classroom is a learning environment where the instruction is provided in both Spanish and English. And in early grades, the instruction ratio is 90% Spanish and 10% English. And then as the learners grow and develop, the ratio changes, providing more instruction in English. So our, our district EPS serves about 22,000 students with nearly 4,000 being multilingual learners. That is about 18% of our entire population, which is 4% more than the state average. Numbers that were surprising to me, interesting to me, and I look forward to learning more about how we are continuing to serve a growing population of multilingual learners. So let's look at the next slide. Helping teachers and schools do this challenging work are Veronica, Ronjali, Carmen, Cindy, April, Becky, and Alita, who all patiently posed for a photo that I took earlier this week. I want you to see the people in the department doing the work. In addition to this fine staff of support in the multilingual learning department, we have launched a new tool for teachers and building administrators called Elevation. It's a data management tool. Elevation makes it easier for us to track student progress and provide appropriate support. The platform provides EPS staff with great tools and resources for multilingual learners, which by the way are often great resources for all learners. Our school administrators and leadership are receiving training on Elevation this week. Elementary teams met in this room this morning. And Thursday, our secondary staff will be learning more about Elevation. I learned a lot about the work we have focused on our multilingual learners, but I've barely scratched the surface with this brief update. You can look forward to a more comprehensive report from Veronica at your meeting on November Let's go to the next slide. One of our goals in Evergreen Public Schools is to ensure students graduate post-diploma-ready, which means we've created conditions for students to reach opportunities, set goals, and make choices to support their personal pathways and long-term aspirations. In an effort to support our students beyond high school and to support a college-going culture, we participate in the Washington Guaranteed Admissions Program, or WA-GAP. This is our second year partnering with WA-GAP. Beginning last year, qualified seniors received guaranteed admission to six Washington universities if they complete the college application process. College Career and Technical Education Specialist Bobby Arnold recently sent information about WA-GAP out to our juniors and seniors. Before sharing senior contact information with WA-GAP, Bobby checks to make sure students have an average GPA of 3.0 or higher and are on track to meet the college admission requirements. In addition, we also want students to complete the free application for federal student aid or what we know as FAFSA. You probably already know that EPS students create what's called a High School and Beyond Plan with the assistance and collaboration of parents and teachers and school counselors who guide students in thinking about their future. And part of that process is completing the FAFSA, which can be a bit frustrating at times for families. I've experienced that myself. I'm happy to report that we support families with FAFSA as well. Over the next few weeks, our high schools will be hosting college and career events to make sure students and families know about FAFSA and can get started on the work. We have, we even have an event for multilingual families scheduled later in the year to assist with FAFSA completion. Our career specialists ensure that Evergreen students complete a financial aid workshop and have access and knowledge of all the scholarships that are available as well. Planning for life beyond high school can be challenging for students and families and I'm pleased to report that our career specialists, school counselors, and EPS teachers are working together to make sure our students are post-diploma-ready. Next slide. Ensuring student success requires the joint effort of schools and families. Frequent and open communication between parents and EPS staff can positively impact a child's learning and growth and development, can also demonstrate to each student that we care about them, their sense of belonging and success. And it's for these reasons we are implementing a new practice at each school, increasing communication around student absences. In the elementary schools, after attendance is taken each morning, unless we've received a phone call from parents or written notification of their absence, we call home. We want to make sure that parents know their child is being reported as absent. In the secondary schools, attendance is taken each class period and absences are reported to parents in a phone call that evening around 6:00 PM. However, on September 30th, we began contacting parents of high school students right after first period around 10:00 AM so that parents were aware earlier in the day of their report, of the reported absence. Recently, middle school began the same practice and parents are now notified around 11:00 AM as well as the 6:00 PM phone call if their child is reported absent. Student safety is our priority and improving student attendance is one of our goals. We believe that improving communications in this way, we can come alongside parents and support students, especially those students having some trouble with attendance. And finally, in passing a law to establish Disability History and Awareness Month in 2008, the Washington State Legislature intended to increase awareness, respect, and acceptance for people with disabilities and to bring a greater sense of pride to people with disabilities. This month, our hope is that Evergreen students will learn more about the contributions that people with disabilities have made to our society, reduce harassment and bullying, and help keep students with disabilities in school. As we grow and expand our efforts to amplify and elevate student voice, this month, we are proud to seek nominations to recognize students with disabilities. Out of the Office of Student Equity and Family Engagement comes the Cultural Impact and Leadership Award. This award will be given to five students across our district who have demonstrated leadership in promoting pride, cultural awareness, academic excellence, and community engagement for students with disabilities. In Evergreen Public Schools, we want to ensure students, all students, have access to excellent first instruction regardless of their native language. We work to ensure all students are positioned for any college or career opportunity after high school graduation. We join efforts with parents to promote good attendance and we celebrate and honor all abilities in each person. This concludes the TLE update for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Fox. Are there any questions for Dr. Fox at this time?
Thank you.
Okay. Our next item is a Department Spotlight. We have Rob Gardner here. Are you here, Rob?
So our Director of Information Technology, Rob Gardner, will lead us off.
Good evening, President Perkins and Board of Directors. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening about our IT security and in regards to staff, student, and data security. First, I'd like to talk about Highline School District. We, that seemed to be, happened on September 7th. They had a incident there, which they're still going through an investigation. It just highlights how important it is to remember that school districts are a huge target for bad actors. And I'd like to introduce this evening Bryce Ray. He is our Manager of IT Systems and Security. Bryce is instrumental in ensuring that our systems, our staff, and our students, and of course, our data all remain secure.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for that introduction, Rob. At a recent Board meeting, Dr. Maloney took some time during her opening comments to speak about our software services provided by Securely. We use Securely for several different and interconnected products, including web filtering, classroom management, and student safety online. I appreciate the opportunity to, tonight, to expand on that topic and briefly discuss our collective approach to cybersecurity in general. I'm going to spotlight two of our Securely products in particular. Our web filter, called Simply Filter, provides an educationally appropriate filter used by millions of students nationwide. Filter provides a baseline for student use but teachers can create their own custom filtering rules using Securely's classroom management tool. A use case where we've already seen this used quite a bit this year is YouTube. YouTube's an educational resource and it's also a frequent distraction in the classroom. Teachers can now block YouTube in their classroom when it's not needed. Our student safety monitoring software, Aware, and the add-on service On Call monitor student safety on school-issued Chromebooks 24/7. With On Call, every alert is reviewed by a Securely analyst. These analysts escalate any critical alerts directly to school safety teams and the district's Safety and Security Office via phone or text, no matter the time. And lastly, a quick update on Securely Home. This is a new product that will be rolling out in the near future. This is an app and a website that lets parents view their students' web history and lightly manage a school-issued Chromebook at home like pausing internet access at bedtime. We're still in the early stages but we will be sharing more information with schools and families soon. We'll have a website up for reference and some materials we'll be sending home. Parent invites are expected to go out via email the week after winter break, so starting January 6th. I have some information to share directly from Securely about the impact of their products. This is specific to, this slide is specific to their filter product. Both of these slides cover the last 180 days, so it's everything from late April, I'm sorry, early April up to early October. The 20 million sites you see there is, is probably a bit inflated by a couple of things. One is when a student opens a website, sometimes it may have more than one scan that it's doing there, if it has some pop-ups in there, if it has some frames within the website. And that's also going to include our students who took their Chromebooks home for the summer and were using their Chromebooks for personal use over the summertime. The 246,000 blocked sites that you see there, that is primarily web ads. So in, in addition to creating a safe environment online for students, hopefully we're able to clear up some of that clutter that students can see while they're surfing around and deliver a more focused experience for them. And our next slide is specific to Aware and On Call, our safety, student safety online tools. As you can see, has been about a little over two and a half As you can see, has been about a little over 2.5 million documents and emails scanned over the last 180 days. And down at the bottom, that kind of gives the information on how much of that information is reviewed by Securely and how much of that has escalated. So they reviewed over 6,400 cases, escalated 377 of those via email, and seven of them, they believed were extreme risk and escalated via phone call. And switching gears now to talk a little bit about cybersecurity, and the timing of this is very good because October is Cybersecurity Awareness Month. Everyone can do their part to protect themselves by using strong passwords or passphrases, enabling multi-factor authentication on their accounts where available, being vigilant against phishing emails, and carefully inspecting any email with an attachment or link, and updating software frequently. For district-issue PCs and laptops, updates can often be performed by rebooting the device at least once a week. The National Institute of Standards and Technology, or NIST, defines five key domains in its cybersecurity framework: Identify, Protect, Detect, Respond, and Recover. What I really appreciate about the NIST framework is that it can be viewed as a timeline from identifying threats to recovering after an attack. It places equal importance on both the actions taken before an attack and the response afterward. This balance is crucial because no matter how strong our defenses are, there will always be incidents that require recovery. And I have an example here of an email that was actually received by several of our principals in September. This email was designed to look like it came from Washington's Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction and included publicly-available information specific to each principal's school. So each principal got a tailored version of this email with their own school's information. The initial steps of Identify and Protect begin before the email is received with staff awareness training and multi-factor authentication. Several administrators quickly identified and reported the message due to the sender's iCloud.com email address and urgent tone. IT was able to respond using our Phishing Response Plan, notifying all recipients an OSPI. No, for the recovery steps were needed in this case because no passwords were compromised. And while this was a successful response, it highlights the increasing sophistication that we're seeing in targeting phishing attacks. And in closing, we have a comprehensive cybersecurity plan to identify, prevent, and mitigate threats, but this doesn't mean a major cybersecurity incident couldn't happen here or that recovery would be instant. Cybersecurity reports have estimated that attackers can be present in a network before detection for anywhere between 70 and 210 days. This underscores the importance of constant vigilance and ongoing investment in security measures. Our best defense is a mix of proactive awareness, robust protocols, and a quick, coordinated response. And with that, I will answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions for Bryce?
Well, Securely and Securely Home, you know, it's preventing students from getting to certain sites on occasion. Is it a different level for different students based on age, or is it just...
Yes, we customize the web filter broadly into groups for elementary, middle, and high school, and we can also customize beyond that by creating groups with specific policies.
Good, thanks. A number of years ago, we had discussions in the board about software that sort of geo-fenced the district and monitored social media based on location, if it could be defined. Do we have something like that today?
Not that I'm aware for locating, when it comes to social media specifically. Broadly speaking, social media is blocked on student devices. There's some exceptions at secondary level for, say, like Pinterest. Pinterest is allowed for students. LinkedIn is allowed for secondary students. But we don't generally allow social media unless there's been an exception in place, like marketing classes sometimes want access to social media, and we can create specific groups for that. But for at-home access of social media, I'm not aware of any tools we have for that.
And these protections are all limited to the machines that the district provides the students, right?
There, some of these can also be installed on, bring your own device, like Chromebooks and things like that. We can actually extend it to that. At this point, we haven't enabled that feature because that is sort of another question that we have to ask about whether or not we should be pushing, what kind of extensions we should be pushing on personal devices.
Okay, thank you. Giovanni Navea, do you have any questions for him? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'd like to point out that this presentation aligns directly with the Operational Expectation Policy 7, which is asset protection.
I turned it off again. All right. Okay, the next item on our agenda is monitoring district operations. Dr. Maloney, we're reviewing Operational Expectation OE2, Emergency Superintendent Succession?
Yes, so on OE2, the requirement is that we name an emergency superintendent succession plan, and I have chosen Dr. Brian Fox, our Chief Academic Officer, who has prior experience as an assistant superintendent in that role and other qualifications as well. And so he, if I am ever unable to perform the duties of the superintendent, then he will step in and provide that service for the board and the district. So what we did is we created the new organizational chart that identifies him as a superintendent, emergency delegate. And we also then updated the form that's required right there with all of the policies that are in place because when we went through and discovered, I went through each one of these with him, we discovered that there were some policies that were missing off that form, so we updated the form.
Okay. Is any action required?
Yes, I think there's a motion.
Yes, then we'll need a motion to accept Dr. Maloney's report on OE2 Secondary, or Emergency Superintendent Succession.
I move that we move forward Operational Expectation OE2 for approval.
Seconded.
Motion is to move forward with the Operational Expectation OE2 report as it's been given. Is that right, Julie?
Yes.
Is there any discussion? And it's been seconded, thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor of this motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Maloney, thank you for this work. The next item on the agenda is our second reading of modifications to Policy 1250, Students on Governing Boards. If we could bring up the document. Okay. Ah, here we go. Thought we were doing 201250? This is GC2. Take a moment while they bring the document up. Here we are. Thank you. So you can see, this is our second reading of modification to Policy 1250 to remove the phrase "from each high school." Dr. Maloney, have there been any questions or comments about this change in policy?
No, I've received none.
Okay. So, final action on this will require a motion?
I move to approve Policy 1250.
Second? It's been moved to approve the changes in Policy 1250 as presented. Bookenegra and Wilson. Any discussion? Hearing none? We'll take, huh? Oh, do you have any points? And thank you for the reminder. Okay, so hearing no discussion at all, we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. The next item on the agenda is comments by the school board. We'll open it up for who wants to go first.
I want to thank you for letting me come along to Columbia Valley. It had been a number of years since I'd been in the school, and I was most impressed by that attendance first push that they were, Dr. Fox was talking about because that was on full display there. And the numbers that they were putting up about it is like in the 90s for each grade, 90% higher. And I think the school average, do you remember what the school average was? It was in the high 90s. It was 95 and up.
Yeah, I want to say 96, but it could be incorrect.
I do have a question on the attendance. I was thinking about the, because I feel like they called in the morning, or they used to call in the morning. And so then it was the evening, but now it's back to the morning for secondary? Is that correct?
Yes, it's back to the morning.
It sounded to me like it was a morning call if they weren't there for first period, but then also the evening call.
I don't, yeah, I don't recall the evening call. It would always seem like it was the morning, so I was just curious when that practice changed. But it feels like it's a better strategy to call in the morning, especially if the parent's not sure, like they think their child's in school.
Yeah. Yeah, that's good stuff.
There's also notifications on ParentSquare so that you can get that on your phone as soon as possible and then respond to it via phone, via ParentSquare. Yeah, it's very helpful.
I think there's even a way in the app to signify an excused absence by a parent.
I'd use it.
Would have been nice. And I'm glad it's there now.
I just want to thank the public comment tonight, and I'm not sure exactly how much the board can be involved with the contract, but if there's any concerns, definitely you can email us, so thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Very good. At this time, we'll go into, the time is 6:14 PM. We'll go into recess for a few minutes and then reconvene in a board workshop where we will discuss the 2025 levy and board protocols and calendaring, after which, we'll go into executive session to review the performance of a public employee. And with that, we're in recess.